The evidence was presented. Wait a minute. Oh, my gosh. It's amusing.
Are we okay to start? Or should I wait?
Well, it's still six fifty-nine by my computer.
Okay. Yes. Someone's here for one of the P and Ds, so I'm wondering if we could move that up. Is that okay after the oral reports?
As long as somebody objects.
Yep, you can do that.
Okay, okay, just to make sure you guys all know whoever. It is now seven o'clock, and I call this meeting to order September sixteenth, and we will stand to honor the flag as you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you at all mark yourselves present, that would be helpful at this point, and then we will do the moment of reflection.
Schneider, present confirmed.
Present confirmed.
Eickley, present.
Eickley, present confirmed.
Tom Zach, present.
Tom Zach, present confirmed. Moment of reflection, Supervisor Zuck, please.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. This is a rendition of our purpose. As we were elected to serve in this role, to have good government was our first goal. We lined up the programs and made a good plan that would help all the people as much as we can. We read our history to look at the past, to try not to do things that we know won't last. We build roads and paths that we know we all need, then a court and a jail, so the laws we all heed. We aid with well-being, health care, and more. We don't turn anyone away from our door. For both old and young, we provide what we can because that is and should be part of our plan. We have parks and forests and lakes and such. They are there for our use, though it may not be much, from records to studies and permits on hand. The duties are endless. The value is grand. So we reflect on our thoughts and our druthers. We should always remember we do this for others. Their needs should be measured and at what cost because with too much spending, the value is lost. Let's now move forward as a group with great skill to accomplish what is needed with the stakeholders' will. And I praise God every day from my chair for the wisdom and strength that I know will be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you write that yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. We're all very impressed. Thank you. Thank you.
Not just another pretty face.
Thank you. You put some effort into that. I really do appreciate it. So I think we have some getting help yet for marking yourselves present. Are there any that are others having trouble? Okay.
Laura Lee Clark is present.
Laura Lee, thank you. Confirmed.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll mark you present, and thankfully, we will have IT working to help resolve our issues. Twenty-nine present. That's a first. We've had this happen for a long time. Congratulations, team. Approval of the Journal of Proceedings from August nineteenth. I have a motion. I have a motion by Supervisor Hirsch, a second by Supervisor Goboy. Are there any corrections to the Journal of Proceedings for April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five? Any corrections? If not, all those in favor, oh, we'll go by vote. Thank you. If you approve, you will vote yes.
Schneider, yes confirmed.
Yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Clark?
Yes.
Confirmed.
Tom Zach, yes.
Tom Zach confirmed. Supervisor Knight? Sisk? Skinner? Dunning, yes. Skinner, yes. What did we miss? All right. Twenty-eight, yes, and one abstained. Maybe we don't have any that abstained. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get you there. Now you can speak.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Chair, I never really know what the right thing to do is when you have not been, you were not present at the previous meeting.
Oh.
It's hard to vote yes or no on something like this, so I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Corp Counsel, could you help us? What should you do if you're absent at the meeting prior?
It's, you can either vote yes or no. You can either vote on it or do what Supervisor Dahl did. There's not really a rule one way or the other.
So you did the right thing. It's okay. Thank you. Good question. I didn't know either. Now, public comment. Do we have any public comments tonight? Public comment. All right. We will move to oral reports. We have two thousand and twenty-four audit report by Mr. Carl, Dan Carlson from Clifton, Larson, and Allen. And you did get a copy of that in email of the report, both the whole report, the executive report, and then the summary. Just getting the rest of the report up for us to be able to see. Yep.
Sue, do you want me, Sue, do you want me to share my? Yeah, I can. The single audit report?
Yeah, it's like the audit summary. It's like a.
I got it.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I'm sharing. I'm gonna share right now, so.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Carlson from Clifton, Larson, and Allen, like they said. Just gonna go over the two thousand and twenty-four audit summary tonight. Met with the Joint Finance and Budget Committee a few weeks ago just to go over this report in detail, and tonight I'll just be going over some summary of some of the items we talked about and discussed. First of all, I want to say the audit went well. Jason and the Finance Department did a nice job of getting us the request that we asked for, so I just wanted to mention that as well. The first page I wanted to look at is page one of the audit summary. It's that audit opinion paragraph there. It's the county receives an unmodified audit opinion, so that just means the financial statements are, they're correct, they're materially correct, the disclosures are correct. So it's just a term that auditors use, an unmodified term. Another thing that gets mentioned there is there was a government accounting standard that was adopted in two thousand and twenty-four related to compensated absences, and it just changed how that liability calculation is done. So governments around have adopted that standard. Down to the internal control paragraph, the only item to note there is limited segregation of duties. It's been in the letter throughout the years and a very common item that's in other, like cities and counties, so. And I wanted to mention, too, there was no material audit adjustments made during the audit, so we didn't find any material adjustments we had to make during the audit. We also note that the findings and results that we didn't see any noncompliance with laws, regulation, grant contract, so we that in that first page there. Moving on to page two. Pages two through five is required communications that auditors have to have with the board. So if you'd compare this with last year, there's not a whole lot that changed. It's pretty boilerplate, just certain items that we have to go over. The main things you'll see probably if you would compare the two would be some date changes and then mentioning that GASB one oh one that I talked about earlier as far as that accounting change, the standard change, but. So I wasn't really gonna go any details of that report just because it's been similar in the past. So if we can get into like the financial information, down to page seven. Appendix C, and we'll start with item one, the general fund. The item I wanted to note on here, the main thing that changed from last year, and this is a summary of the balance sheet on top, the revenue and expenditures down below the last four years for comparison purposes. So if you were to look at comparing this year to last year, the balance sheet there, you'll see that cash and investments went down from seventeen point two million down to eleven point two, and then corresponding, the due from other funds went up, four point four million up to twelve point three million, and that's due to the general fund borrowing to Health and Human Services, three point eight million, and then the Highway Department, four million. So those are, that's the main two items there that I was gonna point out for the general fund. Special Revenue Fund. This is a little bit different presentation. This is just the fund balance of each fund, split up at the last four years for comparison purposes. Many of the funds, they're small, they don't really change a whole lot from year, but there was a few I was gonna talk about briefly, and that was the first one, the Health and Human Services Fund. This is page eight now of the report. Went down from six hundred and fifty thousand dollars down to negative, down to four million negative, and we talked about during the Finance and Budget Committee just some of the reasons why that occurred in twenty twenty-four. And also, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Fund Act, in two thousand and twenty-four, six million dollars was spent, and then another three hundred and fifty thousand was transferred to the Highway Department. There was two point one yet, two point one million yet to spend in that fund to close it out at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Debt Service Fund, that item number three, that just shows the fund balances going down from three hundred and eleven thousand down to zero. That's again just the fund balance at a point in time. That was just because the remaining premium was used in two thousand and twenty-four, but if you were to look at like the revenues and expenditures, the tax revenue pays all the debt and principal and interest in two thousand and twenty-four, and that came up to fourteen point five million of principal and interest for the year. Capital Projects Fund, comparison to last year, it was one point seven million down to six hundred and forty thousand. What happened in that fund? One point eight million was transferreded from the general fund, but one point five million was spent, and then one point five transferred to the Highway Department. So that caused the net decrease in that fund down to six hundred and forty thousand. Page nine. These are the enterprise funds, the Highway Department on top, and then the Airport Fund down below, and it's presented similar to like the general fund is for the summary purposes, where you have the statement of net position on top, and then the revenue, the net revenues and expenditures below that. For the Highway Department, all I was gonna discuss was that operating loss for the year, the one point five million dollar loss, and that just, it's kind of more of a timing thing where for the year, two point two million was transferred in from Capital Projects, ARPA, and General Fund, but then six point nine was spent on the capital contributions for road projects to the governmental activities. So for the, for the two thousand and twenty-four itself, it was a negative, but as you can see, the years before that, they were, they were larger positive amounts. Airport Fund, again, I just wanted to talk about the actual net income piece, like towards the bottom, you'll see last year was five point seven million, this year's three point five million. That's just a matter of the federal and state funded projects that was less than two thousand and twenty-four, so you're gonna have a lower net income for the current year. Page ten. Item six, Internal Service Funds, that's made up of risk management, health insurance, and shared services, again with the kind of the net, statement of net position, and then the net income loss down below that, but this really doesn't change a whole lot from year to year if you can look at the numbers throughout time, the last four years. Item seven, the long-term obligations. This is the obligations of the county, and you'll see the majority of it relates to the GO bonds and notes that was paid down with principal payments, so it went from eighty-three million down to seventy-one million as far as your general obligation debt because there was twelve point three million in principal payments made on the debt in two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any questions at all? That was kind of the notes I was gonna go over, just kind of go on through this relatively quick as far as hitting the high notes of the audit summary itself, but like I said, the Finance and Budget Committee, we went through pretty good detail of the summary itself.
We have one question from Supervisor Paul Stedts-Gofar.
Yes, I have a question. I know you referenced that you felt that the internal controls were adequate with the exception of the segregation of duties. I'm concerned, and I, I don't agree with that, and the reason I don't agree with that is that we had a three million dollar overage in DHS, and that overage never came to the board for approval for payment. It came, it came during two thousand and twenty-five to retrospectively look at it, and it was said, well, so we can make the audit look better, and it was, that was turned down. None of this has been picked up as I read through any of the audit. So how can we have good internal controls when three million dollars, that exceeded budget, can go out without County Board approval?
What we look at is the actual transaction details and approvals. So, I mean, in every department, you're gonna have different controls and policies in place, and it's hard with a county to have total segregation of duties, so that's why that comment's in there. But as far as the decisions to make in a specific fund, that doesn't really relate to transactional controls, it still went through the approval process that was out.
I would beg to differ with you because you cannot exceed budget, and you even referenced at one time that the DHS borrowed three point eight million dollars. Tell me how they borrow it without some type of approval.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the year, that was the financial results.
So, so how does that, as a county board member, give me any confidence that anybody can't be spending money, which we've had a problem with in the past, without approval, and you not picking it up in any way in audit?
The audit isn't, that's not for that purpose. It's the financial statement audit.
Well, I'm gonna be voting against accepting the audit because I, I don't think we have good internal controls.
Are there any other questions? I just have a clarifying question if I could, Mr. Carlson, and that is that our bond rating, we want to maintain our bond rating so that when we do borrow, we're in a good place. How, what can we do as a county and as county board supervisors to make sure that that happens?
That'd be more of a question for your financial advisor as far as what things they'll look at for bond rating.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your report.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me.
We need to go forward now and have a motion, a motion to accept, thank you, I was looking for the right word, accept the two thousand and twenty-four audit results. So I have a motion by Supervisor Schmeyer, a second by Supervisor Beckfield, and we will do a vote on your iPad. So yes means that you do accept the two thousand and twenty-four audit results.
Schneider, yes confirmed.
Yes, confirmed, Supervisor Schneider. Eickley?
Eickley, I vote no.
No, confirmed. Supervisor Clark?
I was able to vote on my iPad, yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Supervisor Sisk? Maybe he stepped out. Is there anybody, you've got all the rest?
Tom Zach?
Tom Zach? I wasn't sure if you could vote on your iPad or not.
It isn't, my iPad isn't working, so.
Okay, Supervisor Tom Zach?
Yes.
Yes. Supervisor Skinner? Supervisor Wilkie? Yes. Supervisor Myron? No. Okay, so it does pass, twenty-three yeses and five nos. We will go on to the update by our Administrator, Administrator Johnson.
Thank you, and good evening. I have a few updates that are in your agenda packet, so just to highlight those. First thing is budget, so I wanted to provide an update to the County Board on the budget process, where we're at, how that's going. So a little recap, just so the, the board knows, back in August, we met with all our departments coming into September here on our budget requests, reviewed reduction plans for a five percent reduction with their departments, and they all provided excellent ideas and plans so that we could increase or actually provide two and a half percent raise for the department staff, for the county staff. That happened in August. In September here, we've, we're moving forward with follow-up meetings and communication with the, with the department heads. We provided follow-up on the reduction plan. We reviewed all that with the departments. Our HR team has sent out personnel changes per their plans and additional clarification. One thing I do want to share is in two thousand and twenty-five, there were hold positions on, on position, hold classifications on positions. We've abolished those except for in the Sheriff's Department where there's constitutional authority, those remain on a holds standpoint, status. Administrator's budget will be published next week. I just finished it an hour ago, the narrative, and Jason will be, I'll be giving a handoff, a good packer off to Jason so that he can take it and finish up the rest of the financial reporting requirements on that. So you'll, that'll go to the printer here at the end of the week, and you'll, we'll have updated budgets available for the board members, and we're gonna hopefully work with Sue and her team on the first floor to have those available, but then it'll, you'll have them for the October meeting for sure, but here at the end of September for a review. So. Joint Finance and Budget and Department meetings will be happening. The first one is September twenty-ninth, and the month of October is fully packed with all of our joint budget meetings, so we'll be focusing on all the discussions regarding the proposed budget submittals from the departments as well as Administrator's recommendation, and bringing that to a close at the end of the month with Joint Finance and Administrator working together to finalize the budget, any budget changes to bring forward to the board for our November acceptance meeting, so. Just wanted to provide that update on budget. Is there any questions from anybody regarding that?
We have several questions. We'll start with Supervisor Hirsch, then Supervisor Larry, then Supervisor Rush, Russell. Supervisor Hirsch?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I note that you've asked for a five percent callback, pullback from the, from all the departments, and two point five percent of that is accounted for by cost of living increase for a raise for employees. What's the other two point five percent?
So the overall five percent is to help come up with enough for the, those, the raise, a two and a half percent raise.
Oh.
That's a good question. Thank you for clarifying. Yep. So going in, last month, we provided an update, Sharon, Jason and I, with the deficit of about one point eight million dollars is what we were looking at, so, you know, those reductions help provide a balanced budget to take care of that deficit.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
Thank you. I just had a, with the new changes, when will we as a board get the final recommendation from the Finance and Budget Committee and the Administration, so we as the board know, okay, here's what's being proposed, and then how many days will we have if we have any suggestions for, you know, proposals? How many days will we have after that? I know then in November, we've actually delayed things a week, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious because I'm a little confused how it works.
Okay. No, that's another good question. We're, Finance and Budget Committee, we have two meetings scheduled, the first part of November, and those two meetings are to finalize the budget, so that's the first week of November, so really, we have a week in between those meetings of time where you'll have that final budget document to review.
And when do we have to have our proposed pages? Remember, we gotta submit them now on a form, right? I mean, there's a new process.
The amendments process? Correct. That can be done on the floor beforehand or on the floor, but, you know, working with the Finance and Budget Committee as well as, as Administration and Finance, you know, the goal there is to have it as close as possible so we can get it to a final.
I know.
Status, but yes, that can be done at, at any time, and we can send out directions and put some information out there on the County Board Gateway and.
Okay, so the, the end of October is when we will get something that we'll be able to look at, and, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the end of October, first week of November is when we'll be finalizing with Finance and Budget.
All right. Thank you.
Those are good questions, and I think you're referring Supervisor Larry to that form that we fill out and turn in.
Yeah.
So we will have that available with a due date so that.
Okay.
You'll have some timeline. Thank you. Very good question. Supervisor Russell?
Thank you, Chair Coffey. I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but what departments had positions abolished?
So there's six positions in total. I don't know off the top of my head all of them, but they will be identified in the specific table in the budget when it's printed. So you'll see those.
It's probably spread out through a number of different departments then?
Yeah, yep, yep, exactly, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And also, just to verify, going back to Supervisor Larry, my notes and Stella and Jason can correct me if I'm wrong, but October 27th and 28th, as well as November 4th, are kind of what we have tentatively scheduled for Finance and Budget meetings. So by the end of October, we should have a really close, and November 4th would be any final clarifying item.
Okay.
And then we'll be set.
Okay, thank you.
Great, don't go on vacation, right, at November 4th, right?
I got my plan for the
Meet everybody. Thank you. Any other questions? From our virtual people as well, any questions? Thank you, and I want to thank Administrator Johnson. He has hit the ground running, and he's drinking from the hose right now.
Three more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, so that was the budget update. So last week, we provided an employee town hall meeting, which is in all county communications, that I provided an update to our county staff as a welcome and just opportunity to know who I am. I provided background on myself, information on vision and goals for the county, as well as budget, health insurance, updates to the staff. So that information, and I'll talk with Samantha, but we really want to use the County Board Gateway, which is the last item, to start sharing information with board members so that you get familiar with going there to get resources. So that went really well. And then lastly is the website update. I know there's been questions about, can we get information? And that's why I wanted to connect it to. So the website update is still scheduled for the 22nd, I believe. Thumbs up from Greg. So with that, we'll be switching over to our new website. It won't be anything different than the same URL, but I do want to emphasize that, in the meantime of our public-facing website, the County Board Gateway is something I want to continue to message with you to keep you plugged in with what's happening as far as resources and happenings here in the county. So if you're not sure on how to get there, please email Samantha, but we'll be messaging that out several times to help you find, find that gateway and get those resources that are out there. And if you're not aware of it, I want you to be aware of it that it is a well-organized system that Samantha has set up and will continue to use to keep a communication tool with yourselves as we go forward.
We have another question, Supervisor DeLuca.
Oh, I think you just answered it. I said, did I miss some email about how to get to this County Board Gateway? Okay.
Correct, that will be coming. I know it's been out there, but I think one thing I want to focus on is, you know, the tools that are available, communication tools for you as board members. One of my goals that I shared at the town hall, and you'll see in the presentation, is communication. You know, a lot of those items that I've heard from the board members and how we can provide better communication, we want to use those platforms that are out there to keep you current on the happenings, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? So we'll go on to written reports. We have the 2025 Contingency Fund on page five. Any comments, questions, clarifications needed? If not, we'll go on to the August 2025 vouchers over $10,000. They were really busy in the Finance Department. Wow, there was a lot to look at there. Are there any questions? Supervisor Fullston?
Yes, I had one question. I think it's on page four of them. That is for the PELION benefits for PTO and E, excuse me, ELB.
Director Shymansky will open a mic for you there.
Yeah, so depending, so when somebody leaves the county, depending on how, depending on their years of service, they get paid out for their PTO, and then up to 200 hours. And then for some people, above that goes to PELION, which is a, kind of like a health reimbursement account. So rather than getting it paid in cash, they get it paid in health.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifications needed? Then we go on to Presentation of Petition's Claims and Communications.
All right, these are just rezoning requests, first reading, a rezoning request from owner Jeffrey Wilkie and applicant Real Land Surveying in the Town of Washington. And then another one is a rezoning request from the owner and applicant Darren Stanton for the Town of Drummond. Again, those are first readings, and they'll come to the board at a future meeting.
So if there is not an objection, what I would like to do is move down to the Committee on Planning and Development since we have some constituents here who are interested in those items. So if we could move to file 25-26/040. Has everybody gotten there? I kind of, kind of, I just want to help our constituents so they don't have to sit all night if they don't want to.
It's, it should be up now.
Page 33?
It's on the screen.
Oh.
Didn't come up.
Supervisor Larry, can you tell me exactly what's wrong?
Well, when you've called for motions, I haven't been able to do that. I've been able to vote.
Okay.
It's like there's a delay, and it doesn't look like normal. Right now, it says Request to Speak, and, but it doesn't give.
It's, oh, we're going to take our expert.
And I did meet with our
Totally can help you.
Sure.
So Supervisor DeLuca, do you have a comment?
No, I
Same problem?
That's the same thing that happened on the last screen. I actually touched Request to Speak, but it didn't put me in the kiosk. And then when I closed out and came back in again, you called on me because it had been accepted.
Oh.
And I just now touched it again, Request to Speak, but it doesn't tell me I'm in the
Oh.
kiosk.
So I see it, but you don't see it?
Right.
Okay.
Has everybody else seen what's up?
But I didn't, Supervisor Larry's, well, I don't know, I'm not sure, because I saw it once.
So you can, you can push me off as done because I can't do that on my iPad?
Oh, well, technology is wonderful when it works, that's all I can say. So are there any concerns about going to the Committee on Planning and Development and following that first? Okay, we'll move down to that, then it starts on page 33, file 040.
An ordinance amending the 2023 official zoning district boundary map for the Town of Washington.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Beckfield, a second by Supervisor Myron, and an explanation by Supervisor Zuck.
It registers, I want to speak.
Thank you, Chair. File number 2526040 is a rezoning petition from a C3 commercial on the highway and an A2 agricultural residential district into a planned unit development district. This, owned by the Heinz Properties. This particular parcel is, for those who know it, are the old or former Tractor Central Building on Highway 93, just south of the Ford dealership. And what you have there is, the front portion of that lot is under a C3 commercial district, and then the permit was issued for them to run Window World out of there at that point. But the last portion of that property has been agriculture preservation. And we, they want to change the entire thing then so that they can add a building back there. It will all be one planned unit development, and the main building, which was the Tractor Central office, would be split into two businesses under this unit development. And each one would be separately permitted then. They'd like to have, part of the family would like to run, I believe, a lavender shop selling lavender products and things of that nature. The most logical plan is to take it out of the agriculture, it's not being used for that at this point, put them both under the planned unit development, make it all one parcel in that same zoning, and then under planned unit development, they would have the restrictions of what that development will allow. And Planning and Development reviewed it, and we took a vote, it was accepted 5-0. We would like your support on this as well.
And Town of Washington?
Town of Washington.
Also approved?
They approved it as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll move to vote on ordinance 040. Yes means you do approve of amending the zoning district for this Town of Washington property.
Schneider, yes, confirmed?
Yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Townsend? Tomzak, I'm sorry, Tomzak?
Tomzak, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, confirmed. Supervisor Dahl? It's not working, what do you think? Okay, yes, confirmed. Okay, 28 yeses, one absent. So, thank you. We will go on to the next ordinance, 25-26/044.
Another ordinance amending the 2023 official zoning district boundary map for the Town of Washington.
I have a motion by Supervisor Myron, a second by Supervisor DeLuca, explanation by Supervisor Zuck.
Thank you, Chair. File number 2526044 is, there's a parcel of land on the, at the intersection of Deerfield and Balsam Road in the Town of Washington, south of the interstate. And the owners, excuse me, Douglas and Colleen Bergman have a parcel that starts at Deerfield and runs south roughly 10, 15 acres. They would like to add another five acres to the south of that, and that's what this petition is for, is to rezone that five acres that is now A1 exclusive ag and change it to A2 ag residential for the purposes of attaching it to the original land that they have or purposes of selling it to another individual. There again, it's on that intersection. Town of Washington reviewed it, it does fit their comprehensive plan and their growth issues, and they voted in favor of it. Planning and Development also reviewed it and voted 5-0 in favor of accepting this rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Myron, a second by Supervisor DeLuca. Are there any other questions? Questions or comments? We will move to vote then, amending the official zoning district for the Town of Washington property as just discussed.
Schneider, yes, confirmed?
Schneider, yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Tomzak?
Yes.
Confirmed, I got it right this time. Thanks for your patience. Okay, we have 28 yes, one absent. So it does pass. The last resolution, 2526/056, approving a multi-hazard mitigation plan for Eau Claire County, and that was linked to a website, and there was also a summary there for us to read. And we have a motion by Supervisor Larry, a second by Supervisor DeLuca, explanation by Supervisor Zuck.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. The hazard mitigation plan for Eau Claire County is like the majority of plans that we have, something that you submit to the state every year or every so often, and they accept it, which makes you eligible for a lot of the grants and other funding that can be done. This is a project that Tyler Esch and his crew have worked on for quite a while. They have, as you noted earlier, a lot of other municipalities, school districts, et cetera, all worked together on this plan to make it something that the state would accept for us to be able to refer to it as our plan for further funding on so many other resource issues. Planning and Development would like to see approval of it. We voted 5-0 in favor of it.
Thank you. I want to ask our council just a clarification question. It's asked to approve, do we approve or accept? I was going to ask you that ahead of time.
Resolution says approve.
Approved, so we go with approve. Okay, thank you. Okay. Supervisor Larry?
Thank you. I just wanted to add a bit to Supervisor Zuck's comments. This plan, they've worked on at least for a year and a half, probably closer to two years. And there were numerous hearings and opportunities for both volunteers and townships and other units of government to have access to it and also to make suggestions. So it's not something that just cooked up and they're throwing at us. So I urge your support.
Well-vetted is what you're saying, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? So then we will move forward to approve the multi-hazard mitigation plan resolution. Vote yes if you approve.
Schneider, yes, confirmed?
Confirmed, Supervisor Schneider. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Tomzak?
Tomzak, yes.
Confirmed. Okay, yes, 28, one absent. So we will go back now to the Committee on Administration. Thank you for your patience in jumping around a little bit here. File 25-26/048.
An ordinance to amend section 2.04.010C of the Eau Claire County Code, Rule 1, Meetings.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Schmeyer, a second by Supervisor Myron, explanation by Supervisor Russell.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. This is getting us back to the topic of the budget process. Calendar, if you recall, we changed our calendar to have the budget meetings the second week of November. Since that vote, the County Clerk's Office discovered that there is legislation, statutory restrictions that we cannot meet on Veterans Day, November 11. So this adjusts our code to comply with that. So if our meeting falls on November 11th, our meetings will be held on the next succeeding day. We could skip a day, in 2026, the 11th is on a Wednesday. So if we meet on Tuesday and we need to continue our deliberations, we would have to skip Wednesday, the 11th, and go to Thursday, the 12th. The Committee on Administration approved this change on August 12th with a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So just remember too that the second day is at 1 o'clock, not at 7 o'clock. We don't want people coming at the wrong time. Are there any questions or comments? Basically, we have to follow the state statute. So we will bring that up for a vote then, on ordinance to amend Rule 1, Meetings. Yes means you do agree with this amendment.
Schneider, yes, confirmed?
Schneider, yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Tomzak?
Yes.
Confirmed. 28 yes, one absent. So we will go on then to file 25-26/038.
A resolution authorizing the expenditure of thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars of opioid settlement funds for court navigation services in 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Myron, a second by Supervisor Schroffnagle, and we have several people that will be speaking on this. Supervisor Russell, we will start review.
Thank you. This is an action, another action to expend money from our opioid settlement funding. This thirty seven thousand five hundred is for this year, 2025, as it says in the description, to authorize this for a position as a court navigator. I think the description outlines what the goals, benefits are.
Just a moment, please.
It's actually a contracted services.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's true. I did word that incorrectly. It is a contracted service. It does describe what that contracted service provider will do. The fiscal impact is at thirty seven thousand five hundred. The Committee on Administration approved this in July with a five zero vote.
Thank you. Supervisor Pagonis, would you like to add anymore to this?
Originally, when we saw this, we thought, or at least maybe when I saw this, I thought that it appeared attenuated. It was hard to understand how court navigation services actually fit into the opioid settlement. And so we did have Tiana Glennow speak to it, and she made clear that individuals navigating the court services, they may either have been opioid users, someone in their family had an opioid issue, and she explained how it relates. And so we were satisfied with that explanation, and we proceeded to approve it in finance and budget, five to zero.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilkie, would you like to add anything?
Judiciary law went over this and ultimately did vote unanimously to recommend its adoption. We did have discussion similar to what Finance and Budget did, with some questions about if it met the requirements of the settlement, with the assurance from staff that it does in fact, this contract meets the requirement of the use of the opioid dollars. With that assurance, we voted unanimously to support it.
Thank you. Director Glenn is here. If you have any questions, are there any additional questions or explanation that the board would like? Then we will move to vote.
Is there vote or?
I believe since this wasn't in the budget, this would be a budget amendment. Yes. So it would be two thirds.
Thank you for that clarification.
The funds were there but weren't allocated. I see the puzzled look on your face.
Okay. Okay.
I knew what you were going to ask.
All right. Is everyone, Supervisor Leary, you're okay with you? Okay. So we'll move forward then on authorizing the expenditure for the opioid settlement dollars for a court navigation service. If you're in favor, you will vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Townzak?
Tomzak, yes.
We have twenty seven yes, one no, and one absent. So that does pass the two thirds that we need to pass the resolution. Thank you. We will move on to Aging and Disability Resource Board, file twenty five dash twenty six slash zero five zero.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of an all-wheel-drive hybrid van for the Aging and Disability Resource Center nutrition program using the ADRC fund balance account.
I have a motion by Myron, a second by Hirsch, explanation by Supervisor Schroffnagle.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. You might have heard this come from the Aging and Disability Resource Board recently pertaining to another van. I guess we're taking advantage of purchasing an all-wheel drive to take care of the routes that are out in the more apt to have bad roads from bad weather, et cetera. We have the money and in our fund balance account, and the board felt that it's better to be safe than sorry. And I can report that the new van that was invested in is taking care of our customers and us drivers very well. So another newer van with all-wheel drive for the rural routes will be welcome with our fleet. Linda is here, if you have any specific questions. Otherwise, I urge you to support this fund balance investment by ADRC.
Thank you. Supervisor Schmeyer?
Mine's an informational question. How much is in the ADRC fund, and how much would remain once the fifty five thousand is expended? And how is that fund replenished? Just for information.
Yeah. Director Struck, can you come up to the open mic here that is on the far, my far right corner?
I don't have the exact number. Last time we checked before we purchased the other van, it was approximately six hundred thousand, but I can get that to the group, myself or Jason can probably come up with that fairly quickly. But we do use it for purchases like this, ovens, things at the kitchen.
And how do you replenish it?
Well, what happens is if we have, if we don't expend all of our levy at the end of the year because we've got some additional grant funding, let's say, or we have vacancies, that money goes into the fund balance. Did I explain that right, Jason? He's nodding.
He's nodding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we will move to a vote then, and this too is a two thirds vote of the body for authorizing the purchase of the all-wheel-drive hybrid van for the Aging Disability Resource Center through their own fund balance. Yes means you approve.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed.
Eickley, yes.
Thanks. Confirmed. Townzak?
Tomzak, yes.
Confirmed. Twenty eight, yes, zero, no, one absent. So you can go with the van. Be safe. Thank you. We will go on to then twenty five twenty six slash zero five seven, resolution supporting state investment for income maintenance administration. We have a motion by Supervisor Leary, a second by Supervisor Dunning, and we will have Supervisor Pagonis start with the response, if you would.
Thank you. It really should be Supervisor Schneider, but I will just give you a thumbnail sketch and then turn it over to Supervisor Schneider. We received something from the National Association of Counties that identified that there is a shift, a cost shift for local governments in the supplemental nutrition program. So whereas it used to be fifty percent federal, fifty percent state, the reconciliation bill removed twenty five percent. So it's now twenty five percent federal, seventy five percent state, and this is administrative. The second piece of it, which makes it a double whammy, is that the requirement, the administration requirement is going up, which will, there would be an expectation that there will be higher costs. So Supervisor Schneider started with this, so I think I'm going to toss it to her with more, for more details.
Thank you. Supervisor Schneider, would you like to add more details?
Yeah, the, actually, the Human Services Board is deeply involved with this, and we voted this resolution forward. So I urge you, it's basically asking the state to pick up and fill in the blank for the money that the feds are not giving, because otherwise it won't be there. And the county can't afford to do that. Now, obviously, this is a ask and a recommend, and sometimes we do that, and sometimes lots of counties do that, and the state pays attention and sometimes not so much. But this is asking them to pay attention.
Thank you. So before we go any farther, Supervisor Hirsch, would you like to add any more as far as how the Department of Human Services walked through this and what impact it might have on our department's staff?
Sure. If you look at the summary of it, you can note that Eau Claire County will face an estimated additional tax levy of over six hundred thousand dollars if the state doesn't assume the twenty five percent administrative match that the federal government is giving up on statewide. The administration of this is one hundred and twenty five million or so. So it's a big, it's a big loss coming from the federal government. It's one of probably several that we're going to see, but this is a very specific one. We're also looking at decreasing staff based on the budget cuts. So, you know, the administration of this program is going to become increasingly difficult. Human Services reviewed all this, voted unanimously to support it. I would ask for your support. Like Supervisor Schneider said, we don't know what the state's going to do with it, but the Wisconsin Counties Association has asked us to look into it, to take it up as a county, and I think we should support that.
Thank you. I have several people who are interested in speaking, Supervisor Fullstead, and then Supervisor Leary.
Yes, thank you. I have several questions, and I don't know who might be able to answer this. I think Director Wedeman might have been able to, but seeing she's not here. One that I asked that ADRC was, I know the state percentage of air is four point four seven. I was wondering what the Great Rivers Consortium air rate is, because I'm concerned that's a high air rate to begin with. That means just in Eau Claire County, there's four hundred and fifty people that are potentially either screened as not eligible when they should be, or vice versa. So that's a, that's a high air rate, and I'm just wondering what the Great Rivers air rate is, if anyone knows it.
I'm afraid I don't, sorry.
Second question that I have is.
I could answer that.
Yeah, let's just wait and see if we can get an answer. Supervisor Schneider?
The error rate, our error rate is lower than that, I know, and an error is not necessarily, it could be an error of screen in, screen out, but it could also be smaller errors that count as an error.
As I understood from staff as well, and tell me if I'm wrong, and Director Struck, I know that this isn't your job anymore, but you know everything about it. So one of the things that hits me is that people sometimes will go over in their SNAP benefit because maybe they have gotten an extra job and they have a few more hours. And this also can cause an error in which they are not, they are not qualifying for one month when they may typically qualify. So Director Struck, could you help us understand it better?
Maybe.
I know. We lived and breathed this together long ago.
I do agree with Catherine that Eau Claire County or GRC's air rate is usually lower than the state air rate. I was texting Kathy Welke to see if she knew off the top of her head for the group. But there are different types of air rate, I think you're getting at, Nancy. Like it could be an agency error, like a worker error. It could be a client error. It could be fraudulent. I will say the fraud part was really low. It usually is, yeah, I simply, my paychecks went over. I was over one month. They call, get the information. There's potentially an overpayment. It goes back, like if you have overtime or whatnot. But there's different types of error. A lot of them were agency, and I think that's the error rate that they're talking about here. It's the worker error, or the state function computer error is what they're referring to.
Thank you. Do you want to speak?
I was just recalling from the Board of Health meeting, I believe, Director Wedeman shared it was between two and three percent, in that range, but we'll confirm and get back to you on that. But it was substantially lower than statewide average.
If I find out before.
Thank you.
Let us know. Thank you.
Supervisor Fullstead, you had other questions?
Yes. The six hundred and twenty four thousand dollars that is being identified as additional county cost based on the current regulations, is that being included in the planned budget for 2026?
No.
No, that is not. And, I mean, I guess I question why isn't it, are we just planning on inserting a service then?
No. So the reason that is, is we have a contingency fund that we plan on having available for this emergency if it does happen. This is estimated at this time, but that's what the contingency fund would be brought forward between Finance and Budget and the County Board to review that cost and what's specifically needed. At this time, there's no, it's an estimate, but there's a lot of uncertainty by all the departments on what will actually happen and what the state will do. But that's the importance of having the contingency fund available for the board to utilize in this case.
The last thing that I wanted to just say is, you know, at the ADRC meeting, I had brought up that it seems more beneficial to me to have someone from the state come and answer our questions regarding this here versus sending down this resolution, or whatever you want to call it. I supported it because, but I don't think it has much value. At the end of the day, I would rather have someone from the state say, what is your plan of doing it? I feel that we should do that before the budget happens. And I had suggested that there be a joint meeting between DHS Committee and ADRC Committee to just learn what the thoughts were from the state, what their plan is.
Yeah, and also to reply to that, I agree. If we could get that information, the sooner the better. And I know between the Health Department, Human Services, and the ADRC, they are constantly watching to make sure anything new or updates, we are comprised of that information as soon as possible. I do feel that the timing will be very close to the November budget, so we're just going to keep our ears close to that to see if we can adjust prior to adoption. But like I stated earlier, if we don't have those information, I think it's going to come out in different phases. Every department's impacted differently. That's more of the reason why in the recommended, recommended budget, you'll see the contingency fund increase for that specific reason going forward with the unknown certainties. But I agree, let's try to, try to get that information as soon as we can, once the information's out from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Leary?
Thank you, Chair Coffey. I wanted to speak regarding the fact of this being a supportive resolution. The idea is the Wisconsin Counties Association, at their weekly telemeeting on Monday, it was a week ago, last Monday, they had mentioned about this major change in funding in the consortia formula, so to speak, and they were asking that the counties do some sort of resolution of support, because this is like a huge, you know, last minute hail mary disaster, pulling a huge amount of money from our budgets that since the consortia were set up, what, twenty years ago or whenever it was? And I remember at the time, when this whole system, we had to approve it, and it was proposed between the feds and the state, we had to agree. And I remember Supervisor Bates at the time was explaining, if we did the administration, we would get a little bit more money, which of course, we knew, we had the oversight work, but it would. which of course we knew, we had the oversight work, but it would pay off because we'd get a few more cents. Well, now what they're doing, and this was, some of us were asking, well, you know how they are. We said, don't you suppose they're going to pull some of that funding? Well, took them 20 years, but here they are, trying to slip out the money. So they're trying to get the support out there so that they hope to be able to work with the state and federal legislators not to make this huge change. Because, you know, here we are, what, seven weeks from a budget, and they're talking about a $626,500, whatever debit on our account. And it's like, it's really not fair. At least if they were going to do something like this, they should have done it last February. We would have been better prepared. That's what the whole idea is. It's, I doubt you could get anybody from DHS up here for a one-on-one meeting because all 72 counties are going through this. So I urge your support, and hopefully they'll talk about it at this weekend's conference a little bit.
Thank you. Supervisor, or Director Struck?
I just wanted to add something. Again, I don't, I'm trying not to speak on behalf of Human Services, but I did do this for 18 years. When you talk about the $624,000 on Eau Claire County's, you know, bank account, remember, they are part of a 10-county consortium, and there are, there should be, I would think fiscal implications for all 10 counties, not just Eau Claire. And they have a contract amongst each other. So I just wanted to highlight, there's 10 counties involved in this, not just Eau Claire, although Eau Claire is the lead agency. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions? So we will move to a vote then on the resolution, Resolution Supporting Investment in Income Maintenance Administration. If you agree, vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed Supervisor Schneider. Supervisor Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Yes, confirmed Supervisor Tomzak?
Tomzak, yes.
Confirmed. 27 yes, one no, and one abstained. So it does pass to go forward to the Wisconsin Counties Association. Then we will move down to Committee on Finance and Budget. File 2526/047 ordinance. Yep, she's, she's getting, I'm shifting her around a lot.
In ordinance to amend section 2.04.485 of the code, Committee on Finance and Budget, to amend chapter 4.02 of the code, budgetary procedure, to amend chapter 4.04 of the county code, purchases and transfer of funds, to amend chapter 4.06 of the code, finance department.
I have a motion by Supervisor Myron, a second by Supervisor Welke, and an explanation by Supervisor Pagonis.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So there are, I want everyone to keep in mind, and Madam Clerk didn't read it, is this also includes the adoption of a budget management policy. So the budget management policy and the changes to the code are hand in glove. So we need to keep that in mind. All of this passed unanimously at Finance and Budget, and it's been involved a huge amount of work, especially for Director Samansky and for Corporation Counsel. So I think the best way to explain it would be to maybe expound a little bit on what the administrator said. First, it's important to note that we are adopting a particular statute. We've been back and forth with statutes in county code for budget and finance. We're now at 6590. I encourage you all to read it. It's great reading. The, I think the best way to describe it, think about, last year, we got a little book and a big book. So we're going to get the big book, and it's going to be the department. And it's going to be what the department request is. The little book is going to be the administrator's recommendation. Then there's going to be a third item, which is going to be basically a spreadsheet with columns. And it's going to be the department request. It's going to be the administrator's recommendation. There's going to be a column on what the oversight committees have suggested. And then the final column will be the finance and budget recommendation. So what you will see, you're going to read, still have to rely on all the original information, but what you're going to see from Finance and Budget is a spreadsheet. There are many reasons for doing it this way. If you recall our last budget session, Finance and Budget came in with seven amendments. One of them was a huge amendment that required a whole lot of shifting of finance. It was a semi-nightmare. By doing it this way and having us work off the finance and budget suggestions, recommendation, then all of that hard work will already be done. So we spent, for all of those amendments, they, each one had to be introduced, each one had to be debated, and each one had to be voted on. We're going to eliminate that piece of it by introducing the budget as amended. So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, the finance director, the county administrator, and Finance and Budget are working very closely. And this is a reintroduction, let's say. So that there's a lot of collaboration. I've met with the administrator several times. Poor Jason, I call him every day. And we should all feel sympathetic about that. So I, I call him every day. So we're, we're working very closely. And so what these changes do is to allow that to happen. Another thing that's important is it somewhat gives the finance director a little bit more authority than he's had. It's consistent with the statute 6590 in terms of being able to do some, let's say, movement of finances within a department. And the budget management policy does that explicitly, where there's, for expenditures, I mean, there's a revenue section, but then for expenditures, there's personnel and everything associated with personnel, and there's what I just call everything else, so contracts, services, et cetera. And in the past, department heads have been fluid in moving funding, like putting off hiring for the purposes of using it for the extra funding for a contract. By giving the finance director a little additional authority, the department head would go to the finance director and the administrator and say, this is what I'd like to do. We don't expect that Jason's going to be hard-nosed. I'm pretty sure John's not going to be hard-nosed. But it's to just keep the finance department informed. Basically, our plan is for complete transparency. We want, we want the supervisors to know what's going on. On a monthly basis, we will get a director's report from the finance director with all of the information in terms of any transactions that have occurred. So what this, these edits have done, and you've had two months to read it, so I'm sure you haven't memorized by now, but what these edits do is basically improve transparency, improve the communications, and move us to a situation where we're working together, both staff and the supervisors in the committee. Is that enough?
Thank you for your explanation. Very good explanation. Thank you. We have several questions. We will start with Supervisor Schmeyer, then Supervisor Welke, then Supervisor Chilson, then Supervisor Zook. So Supervisor Schmeyer?
Well, first of all, I want to express the, the thanks and the appreciation, I think, of the entire board. I've been on this board about 15 years, and we've been waiting for this year after year, and it's finally here. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you did on this. I want to address three different things, I think, probably in a, in a ascending, a descending order here. Now, first, line 22 in file number 47 on page one of that file. The phrase "provide its recommend- recommended budget to the county board" is a change of practice. Now, I've listened to what Supervisor Pagonis has explained, and my understanding of that is what would come back to the board when the county board chair sends the budget to the board, to the committee for its review, it's sending it to the, to the committee for the wisdom of that committee. That's the one that knows about finances and so on. What should come back from that board is that wisdom. So if it comes back in the form of, as I think Supervisor Pagonis was describing it, columns indicating what the original form was and what the recommended change would be, then I have no problem with it. But I don't think the phrasing of that expresses it because what was described really are recommendations that come back to the county board from the Committee on Finance and Budget. So, um, first of all, I want to check to make sure that what I've said is a correct understanding.
Can you clarify for me again the, the line you're on? Because I'm-
Line, line 22 of the first page of file 47.
Line 22. Which says streamline budget controls and align code with current practice?
No. I'm sorry, maybe we're not looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I'm-
This is file 25-26047.
Oh, oh, page 82 is actually the explanation.
I'm sorry.
Budget from the county board to the committee, provide its recommendation.
I, I have an older copy in front of me. That may be the problem.
Page number 82.
It's section 1, 2.04.485B, subparagraph 1. Right at the beginning.
2.04. Just read the number to me. That's actually- But I'm, it doesn't say the same thing.
On your copy, look at page, eight, no, page 84.
Oh, 86?
No, page 84. 4.02.040. Last line.
Okay, page 85. I think that will clarify it. If you go to page 85, on line 22, it says, upon referral of the annual budget from the county board to the committee, provide its recommendation to the county board. Am I on the right statement?
I'm not sure at this point.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I would like to make sure that-
Just for a point of clarification, you have to approve the ones with the strikeouts and what the language, the reason, the one that is, what it's going to end up looking at is for ease of-
Of reading.
Reading. So you know exactly what it's going to say when it's done.
So we have to look at this.
So because in order to change the code, we have to have the strikeout be the one that's approved.
Okay.
And to that purpose, if that in fact is what we're doing, I'm probably going to offer an amendment. And I want to make sure that I'm referring to the correct line on the correct document.
Yeah, so I think, I just need it repeated. So are you on the, on page 85 now Supervisor Schmeyer? So we're all in the same, so we can follow what you're saying?
I'm on, this is a correct-
Because the one with the strikeout starts on page 85, if I am correct. Does everybody seeing?
83.
Okay. So if you go to, to page 85, then what line is it that you're?
22?
What page is that?
Okay. Budget from county board to the committee, provide its recommendation, recommended budget to the county board.
That's the phrase that I'm addressing.
Okay.
All right.
So-
Now that we know what phrase I'm addressing.
Yes, that's helpful.
All right. The description-
It's on page 85 of your iPad. If you're using a laptop, the number might be different.
It is different.
Oh, it's not what's on the bottom of the page. Okay. So just for clarification, we're talking about 4.02.040, referral to the Committee on Finance and Budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think it is, yes.
Well, we have to make sure we know exactly where you, could you read the line that you're concerned about, and then I think maybe we can help you?
I'm going to ask Supervisor Russell.
Okay.
Glasses.
Okay.
I, I didn't think-
Oh, Supervisor Russell, just, here we go. Okay, I got John.
Yeah, and 4.02.040, referral to the committee on finance and budget. So it would be- After such listening sessions and completion of the joint meetings, the Committee on Finance and Budget shall, shall submit to the board its recommendations for-
Of?
Oh, of?
Yeah, four is crossed out.
Oh, yeah. So cross out, four amendments to the administrators. So with that cross out, it reads, its recommendations of the proposed budget. So it takes out the line amendments to the administrator's proposed budget.
Correct.
Is that, I think with the-
If I could just repeat, 4.02.040, referral to the Committee on Finance and Budget. That's what she just read.
Would you read the last line of that paragraph?
After such listening sessions and completion of the joint meetings, the Committee on Finance and Budget shall submit to the board its recommendation of the proposed budget. That's the spreadsheet I was referring to earlier. It's going to be a column.
The process that we have now is that when the administrator completes the budget, after that whole process, the administrator presents it to the county board, the county board chair, who then refers it to the Budget and Finance Committee. And the instruction is, the Budget and Finance Committee is to review it and report back to the board with its recommendations or amendments to the administrator's budget. That's our current practice.
That practice changed in 2017. So the practice for, ever prior to 2017, it was the Committee on Finance and Budget presented the budget to the board. So then the practice was changed so that, and this is by Administrator Shalf. And so it was changed to require finance and budget to present amendments. What this is doing, what this change is doing to Title IV is that rather than do amendments, the Committee on Finance and Budget is presenting the amended budget.
All right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm speaking to. Because I believe that, first of all, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The process that we've been using, in my opinion, has been fine. It served our purposes. Secondly, I believe that the function of the Committee on Budget and Finance is not to author the budget, that is, put it presented in a final form, but to present to the board its recommendations after reviewing the administrator's budget. That's my understanding. And so however that could be accomplished, I would like to preserve the process that we have now. But I'd like to- we have now, but I'd like to, I'd like the description that I heard of the format that would come through, the columns that would show. In other words, I don't think the Budget and Finance Committee should be the one that says, here's the budget you're going to look at.
I think before we go on, Supervisor Pagonis, I think there's some confusion. Could you explain how you see that process working? Well, sure. So what has, what has happened more recently is that Finance and Budget goes through their joint meetings, and then, think about last year, we had seven amendments to the administrator's budget. Each one of them was debated, and then we voted on them. What I'm suggesting is, what this is suggesting is, rather than do all those amendments, which was a lot of work, it's going to be a column adjacent to the administrator's recommendation, and then the, I'm just assuming we're going to work off the rightmost column. So it's going to be basically, we're submitting, so the administrator still submits to the county board, that's the little book that we're talking about, county board refers it to Finance and Budget, Finance and Budget is going to submit a spreadsheet, and we're going to work off the column in the spreadsheet. Can I ask a clarifying question, then? Are you still making amendments at the final county board meeting, then? No. How does that work? We make amendments in the committee, and so what you're going to see is the Finance and Budget's recommendation, and then if any supervisor says, oh, we don't like that, we want to go back to the administrator's suggestion, sure, I mean, we can do that. That's then an on-the-floor amendment. So both of them, it's, we're looking for transparency, we're looking to streamline the process.
Can I just make one observation? I wouldn't recommend putting that specificity in the code regarding all the columns, but in the budget procedures and the budget calendar, it's noted in there.
Right.
I would not, I mean, we'd be changing the code every year.
And that's certainly not my intent to put it in the code.
No, I know, no.
And the, Jason and I are working collaboratively, along with John, to put together the budget guidelines. I mean, I wrote them for years, up until the last four or five years. So it's just, we need to be doing it together. We can't have, we can't just have one individual decide on a calendar, decide on the guidelines without some dialogue. Thank you. Supervisor, or Director Samansky, do you want to make any points here before we go on with the rest of the questions?
No, I mean, the, I think the real question is, to sum it up, is which, which budget are we voting on here? Supervisor Pagonis is suggesting that we vote on a budget with Finance and Budget's amendments already incorporated into it, and Supervisor Schmeyer is suggesting that we take the administrator's recommended budget and then consider and vote on the amendments proposed by the Committee on Finance and Budget. So that's, that's the difference between the two models. Does that make sense?
Yes, that summarizes it very well. Thank you. I think we'll go ahead with people's comments, and then maybe this will become clearer as far as what people would like to have moving forward. Supervisor Wilkie, then Supervisor Chilson, then Supervisor Zook, then Supervisor Russell. So Supervisor Wilkie.
Well, first off, I want to extend my compliments to the five members of the Budget and Finance Committee who unanimously bring this forward. It was a lot of work, and I know Corp. Counsel put in a lot of work to this. I know the Finance Director put in a lot of work to this. Having had the privilege of being, in the past, 20 to 30 years on Budget and Finance, had a lot of experience with dealing with budgets, I'm not so sure it's worked fine as of late, when we had that change where we worked off the administrator's budget. I liked working off the Finance and Budget Committee's budget. I want my Finance and Budget Committee to be a Finance and Budget Committee. Bring to me your best recommendation for me to make amendments to if I don't agree with it. I also like the fact that the way they're talking about a spreadsheet makes a lot of sense to me. Over the years, Oversight Committee's recommendations seem to get lost in the dust. You can't compare them. Well, now I'm going to be able to, what they're doing here is look at the department. All five of these could disagree with one another, they could be something different, okay? Department, it's got a point of view, I'm going to get to see that. I'm going to, I'm going to get to see what the Oversight Committee recommends. By state statute, the administrator has to give us a recommended budget. He accomplishes that, we'll see that. And then we'll see our Finance and Budget Committee's recommendation, who has had public hearings, who has been at every Oversight Committee, is looking at the total picture and giving us it. Now, I may not agree with the Finance and Budget Committee's recommendation, no problem. I can make an amendment right here on the board floor, because the ultimate power rests here. We're not giving Finance and Budget Committee any more power, we are in fact giving them more influence and more efficiency and more transparency by what's happening here. So I fully endorse the work that they have done here. They outlined clearly the rules of the road in the budget process, and I think our budget process will be more efficient than it has been in the past, maybe shorter. Not that shorter means good, okay? I hope we do due diligence in the budget process, because as I have said before, the most important vote that we make for the entire year is on the budget. That's our most important task. It's our moral document, it's how we establish what we're going to do. And I want our Finance and Budget Committee to be able to return to being a Finance and Budget Committee. And thank you, you five members. I'm glad I wasn't on during that process, even though I had all those years. That must have been a challenge for you to put that together. Thank you.
If I could just make a quick comment, please? If you note that 4.02.045 is brand new, it's coming in for the first time, and what that allows is for Oversight Committees as a group, who know their departments, to make amendments. So previously, it would only be a supervisor, an individual supervisor, who could make an amendment. Now, if there's an Oversight Committee that says, wait, we don't like that, we don't like what Finance and Budget is doing, we don't like what the administrator's doing, they can come in with their own amendment. And it's, we found it really important that Oversight Committees can do this, given they know the department certainly better than Finance would. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you. Supervisor Chilson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to start out, I'm going to direct a question to you. I'm in the queue to speak. Was there an amendment offered that's on the floor right now or not?
No.
I was uncertain on that. Okay, so we're on the original resolution.
Right, correct.
So as I read this, I will at the end direct a question to the Chair of Finance and Budget, Supervisor Pagonis. I will direct it to the County Board Chair, and I will also direct it to the administrator. And when I do that, I'll have a notation for the clerk as well. We got is a change to county code, which is a change in the law of the land. That's the official document, that's how we operate, that's how we do business. So as I listen to the explanation by Supervisor Pagonis, we are going to, this, bringing this forward is taking up the budget as amended by Finance and Budget.
Right.
Which I'm okay with. My concern in listening to the explanation and the clarification I'm going to ask for, all the adjustments previously were taken up individually, are now going to be taken up together, and I think I understand that we could, you could more than likely probably address one or pull it out if you wanted to. That's my understanding, anyway. Here's where my concern comes in and where I'm going to ask for clarification, and years passed, at that time, we go back, years passed, I was on the other side of the coin, I was part of Finance and Budget. We, the budget was proposed, and the only things that were allowed for debate were the items that were brought forth by Finance and Budget, which I felt was incredibly unfair to other supervisors. So my concern is, and again, I just, in years past, supervisors were not allowed to introduce amendments on the floor to the budget. So what I want to do, and my question is going to be, I want to make sure that the intent with this revision of code is that supervisors, individual supervisors that are not on the Finance and Budget Committee, still have the option and the ability to make individual budget amendments on the floor at the time of budget deliberation. So I want to direct that question for clarification. I'll start with Supervisor Pagonis. Your intent is still, we'll operate off your budget, but individual supervisors are still allowed to be part of the process.
Okay, I wrote this paragraph, so I'll just read it to you. 4.02.045, additional supervisor-proposed amendments. Governing committees or supervisors may propose amendments to the recommended budget for review by the Committee on Finance and Budget. The committee shall submit to the board its recommendation regarding the proposed amendment. Each proposed amendment will receive a vote during the annual budget meeting. Supervisors are encouraged to follow this process to permit Finance and Budget to assess the fiscal impact of the amendment. So every supervisor has the ability, or the Oversight Committee has the ability, to bring amendments. It also says, under 070, amendments may be proposed by any governing committee or by individual county supervisor.
So the clarification, then, is, yes?
Yes.
An individual supervisor on the board floor at the time of budget deliberation can make an amendment?
They can make it on the floor, they could make it in advance if they want it reviewed for a fiscal impact, sure.
That clarifies, is that, okay, I'm going to, is that my, the answer to my question, is that written in your paragraph or not?
It's written in two places. It's written in...
Individually on the board, when you read back to me, I didn't think stated that it would, talked about being done in advance, but not at the time of budget deliberation on the floor.
Another sentence, these amendments may be proposed by any governing committee or by individual board supervisor. So the county board shall deliberate on the annual budget and consider amendments.
That's what I was just going to read, so.
So the answer to my question, just for everybody's ears, is...
Yes.
On the day of budget, an individual supervisor can bring an amendment that will be debated.
Yes.
That answers my question. I was going to ask the clerk if you could, if you would be so kind as to summarize what I've asked, make note of it in the county board meeting minutes is what I would ask.
And it's in the...
For clarification.
It's in the code.
Put it in the minutes.
I, make me feel warm and fuzzy, and put it in the county board minutes. I understand what you read to me, but I just want, given the fact, when I go back historically, I'm just trying to clarify and put in cement that board supervisors can do that at time of budget deliberation.
And the answer is absolutely yes. That's the plan, that individual supervisors or committees, absolutely yes, and keep in mind, our objective is complete transparency. We want to be able to debate any question that any supervisor has, whether it's of the administrator's column, whether it's the Oversight Committee's column, whether it's the original department request, or whether it's Finance and Budget's column.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You. Supervisor Zook.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, it is understood, I don't want to get all caught up in it like this, but it is understood that now with this column structure, et cetera, it's not a question of who's bringing the budget, not a question of who's presenting the budget, but allowing everybody with a budget entry to put it on a page where we can all see it and make our own judgment.
Yes.
What I would like to explain about all of this code that we did are some key elements. Number one, in the past, we have jumped between different state codes as to what we're following in our budget and what we're not. This document clarifies that we will be using state statute 6590 for our budget process. It also defines the role or roles of our administrator, our Finance Director, Finance and Budget Committee, et cetera, so that we know what portions they do and don't do. We need that, because if you're going to allow authority to any one of those entities, we need to know who has that authority. It also established this level of budget that we call. You always question, did we have a budget that's balanced by the county as a whole? In other words, if we've got $100 million coming into the county and we're spending $100 million, we're in budget, we've got it balanced, we can leave right there. But that doesn't allow for one department to take money from another department, because we haven't defined that. Now we do. It's going to be by departmental, each individual department has their own dollar figure of budget, and that dollar figure is in two categories, personnel and other personnel-related, and what we would call operational. So if you're running out of pencils, you can't take somebody's wages to help pay for it, unless it goes through a process to get proper authority.
Right.
Which is extremely important to be able to tie that down.
Yes.
The use of the Finance and Budget Committee for these deliberations with that column is very valuable, because we're the ones that are supposed to know the fiscal responsibility. It also defines the rules of contingency, which we'll be dealing with later. It limits the transfer of any monies without proper authority, and it helps align policies to have more value in our deliberations going forward. Those are the key elements I want everybody to understand and vote on this document, because all of these are extremely important.
Thank you.
Good summary. Thank you. Supervisor Russell.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. I had a couple of questions. One was, when the Finance and Budget Committee receives the administrator's recommended budget and they make changes to it, as you said, in the past, we had amendment documents, which if I recall, kind of described the rationale for the change. So I'm wondering, with this format that's a columnized version of it, will the full board be able to see the rationale for the recommended change? And will they be vetted through Corp. Counsel and the Finance Director to make sure we're still in compliance with mandated policies, et cetera?
Well, I have a couple of responses. Last year, we did not vet any of our amendments with Corporation Counsel, and if she didn't like any of them, my guess is she would have told me. So, no, Corporation Counsel probably would not be involved. As I mentioned earlier, Director Samansky has the disadvantage of talking to me every day, so there was no question that he would be very closely involved.
We all give our sympathies to Director Samansky.
Yeah, well, and I think that's, that's good. We haven't exactly worked through a format... through a format of how any changes would be presented. Um, right now, what we're working on primarily is not wanting to put out another book, okay? We, we've got the two. If we're lucky, we'll have an approved budget that might be a skinny little book. We don't want another book. But in the past, um, we've done some, like, very short line item types of rationales of explanation. So, we haven't really worked it out. The, the Oversight Committee, the Finance and Budget will have to discuss it more. I mean, we, we have no idea, I mean, we might agree with everything. We don't even know whether there's going to be very many changes. So, we don't know. The answer to your question is, not sure yet.
Okay. And then, just the timing of it. So, once that is presented, and then you're saying, which I think is a good idea, that Oversight Committees may want to come back and suggest amendments, there won't be very much time for a committee to, Oversight Committee to meet, will there, before the budget meeting?
Um, well, the Finance and Budget meeting, the last week of October, and if necessary, we're going to have a wrap-up on, uh, November 4th. Um, the, so there's that week that's available. Um, but if the Administrator's Budget has something that's pretty egregious, and the Oversight Committee wants to object to it and make an amendment, they should do that. I mean, we should be able to communicate. My whole point is transparency. If, if someone is not happy with what we've done with the Sheriff's Budget and wants to call me and say, "This is crazy," you know, that's open for discussion. And there's nothing preventing the, um, any supervisor from coming to Finance Committees, and we're going to be having joint sessions, so you'll be there for all of that. So, I, the point is to have as much clarity and transparency as we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry that there's not enough time. I, I can't do much about that.
Good comment.
Snyder wants to get in line with a question eventually.
Thank you. So we have Supervisor Schmeyer, and then Supervisor Schneider. Supervisor Schmeyer.
To go back to my original point, what I'm, what I'm focused on here is that the administrator is charged with drawing up the budget and puts it through a process. And if what Supervisor Pagonis has described is that when that budget goes to Budget and Finance, and then it comes out of Budget and Finance as the administrator's budget, and then there's, I don't care what it is, another column or something that says, "And here's what we think it should be," I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that it's the administrator's budget that comes through, not, not the Finance Committee budget. Finance Committee does not have the authority to change that budget on its own and just send it back to the Board. That's my concern. So, and gathering from what Supervisor Pagonis has said, that what will come back to the Board is some sort of arrangement of the text, so that we can tell, here's the, here's the administrator's budget, and here's what the Budget and Finance is saying should be done.
And there might be another committee, and there might be a single person, correct?
Might be.
I'm understanding.
Right.
However, the wording that is in there doesn't say that. It says that Budget and Finance returns to recommend budget.
Right.
I don't think that that's a proper wording. I think that the original wording that struck out should be restored.
Well, I, I guess at this point, if you want to make that amendment, then we would have to go that, that route and make an amendment. And it looked to me like we're going to take a break at nine o'clock. Is that correct? Did I see that? Oh, that was accidental. That I saw it coming, I was like, oh, maybe we need a break. Um, so, um, do you choose to make an amendment, I guess is my point?
I'm, I'm going to, I don't know if it's a claim of privilege, but why don't we take the break, and then I would like to have first, first crack as soon as the break is over.
Okay, that sounds fair enough. Supervisor Dunning?
By what line item and page, so that we know what he's talking about?
I, I can show you. Yeah, we have to have the details. So that would give you some time to do that, Supervisor Schmeyer.
Okay.
Okay.
I can show you, Jim.
All right.
All right.
So- Supervisor Schneider, would you like to speak, and then we're going to take a break?
Yeah, my question is, if Human Services decides we need 100,000 more than what the Administrator's Budget said, do we have to say, "Well, take it from here or there," or do we just put in the column, "We need 100,000 more for this"?
Sorry, there's no magic money.
And then the Finance and Budget votes on that or not on that?
Any budget amendment that is, is, you have to delineate where the money's coming from and where it's going.
Exactly.
So, for any budget amendment, regardless of who's bringing it forward.
Exactly.
Does that clarify?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good, good reminder for everyone.
Okay.
All right. So, um, I see that it is 8:55. Um, we will come back in 15 minutes? In case you don't, we need to get started, yes. I understand we have an amendment, and, um, Clerk McDonald's going to pull that up for us.
040.
040, okay, thank you. And on my iPad, it's page 87, line 13 through 18. Oh, he has two spots, okay, okay.
Uh, the first spot here is under 2.04.485, where Supervisor Schmeyer is asking that the wording stay the same, not be changed. So it would read, um, "The annual budget from the County Board to the Committee provide its recommendations," recommend, yeah, recommendations to the County Board, instead of the proposed recommended budget. So.
No, we haven't, we haven't made, we were, I was just having her pull it up, but thank you for that. Okay. So, we have a motion by Supervisor Schmeyer, and I need a second to move forward on this. So Supervisor Dunning, seconds, in order to move forward on the amendment.
It's not clear out in radio land what the amendment is.
Oh, you know what? I'm having the same problem because I can, my eyes are not able to read, it's so far away for me.
May I?
Uh, Supervisor Schmeyer.
I move to amend Resolution 47 in two places, and I'm asking the clerk to help me to clarify the two places.
All right. The first place is line 22, um, of the section 2.04.485. And that would be to not make the strikeout there, leave it as worded, provide its recommendations to the County Board. So would this be two, two separate-
No.
-amendments? And then the second one is in section 4.02.040, line 17, or line, yeah, 17 and 18, wishes also to use the original wording where it would say, "Committee on Finance and Budget shall, shall submit to the Board its recommendation of the proposed budget."
Now, the only clarification we might entertain is to clarify recommendation. Does it include amendments or, or amendments/recommendations? To me, it doesn't matter because they're the same. And I'd like to provide a brief rationale.
Okay.
My interest is that what comes back from Budget and Finance is not the budget as Budget and Finance has changed it, but the Administrator's Budget, and however we want to clarify what it is that Budget and Finance is saying, should change, whether that's a recommendation or an amendment. So the document that Supervisor Pagonis described, I think, would meet that requirement. I just want to make sure that what comes back to the Board is not the Administrator's Budget, which Budget and Finance has changed and is now presenting to the Board. That's my intent.
Are there any other comments or questions about-
Wasn't there two places? What's the second one?
This was the second one. The first one was earlier in the section up here, section 2.04.485.
I got that one.
Okay, and then this, so that's the, and then the second one was down here in section 4.02.040, line 17 and 18. So in both cases, Supervisor Schmeyer liked to keep the wording as it was.
Are we done discussing it yet?
But unless I'm missing the vote here, wording as it was would put back in amendments to the administrators-
Right.
-and just say budget. So the way-
No.
Yeah, well, but that's what, that, if it's reverting back, that's what it would say.
What I want to do is remove the strikeout, I'm, I'm sorry, remove the changed version that's here to go back to what it's changing from. Now, my understanding is, the original is struck out with a line, is that correct?
Yes, so-
I want to refer that.
Amendments to the administrators is, was in the original.
Yes.
And you want that put back in?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just want, and so, and you're leaving in of the proposed budget, of the proposed, because that's additional language?
It's not a proposed budget, it's back.
So, can, can I read this and, and tell me if I'm correct, because I'm still confused? "After such listening sessions, the Committee on Budget and Finance shall submit to the Board its recommendation for amendments to the Administrator's Budget." Is that correct?
Recommendation.
That's, that's reverting it back to what it's original for.
Yes.
Okay. So, should I read that to everybody again? Has everybody got it? Okay, and then 4.045 is-
No, that was, that was 4.02.040. The other one was earlier on in section 2.04.485. He wants to leave it as, provide its recommendations to the County Board.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have several, um, comments. Supervisor Pagonis, this has to be to the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, the, um, the proposed amendment defeats the purpose of our revisions here. The point of the revisions is for increased improved collaboration between the County Administrator and the Committee on Finance and Budget. It was lost over the last eight years, and we would like to restore it. Part of the restoration is the transparency that I keep talking about. Certainly, Finance and Budget would have some type of narrative if they make changes, but it, by going back to amendments to the Administrator's Budget, it just puts us back as, as, with, with no role as a Finance and Budget Committee. It removes the, the purpose of Finance and Budget Committee. So, that's the part of the point behind making these changes, is that we're looking for improved collaboration.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilke.
Well, our Finance Chair kind of hit on what I was, will thrust of what I wanted to say. We, trying to get away from making amendments on the Administrator's Recommended Budget, that's still submitted to you. You see that. You're making with this proposed amendment, you're going right back to, uh, that as the process, whereas the original resolution brought us back to the Finance and Budget Committee actually having some authority, some privilege to be a Finance and Budget Committee, and present it to you all at once in their column, not a bunch of piecemealed amendments to get it where they recommend it to be. I strongly encourage you to defeat, uh, this amendment, otherwise, in fact, you have taken away the, the good progress that has been made here. I would also suggest to you, it's my understanding, and they can speak up if I misspoke, that the administrator, our current administrator, is currently just fine with what's before you, not with the amendment. Your Finance Director is just fine with what's before you without the amendment. Your Corp Counsel is just fine with what's before you without the amendment. Don't mess it up.
Thank you. Supervisor DeLuca.
Um, I'm kind of reverting back to when I first came on the Board in about 2016, 2017. Um, we had two columns that came in the budget process, and the Administrator's Budget was listed, and then in the column next to it was the Finance and Budget's recommended changes to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And during that time, I don't remember it stating which one we were actually working off of. I think what Supervisor Schmeyer is concerned about is that we're defining we're only going to work off of the Finance and Budget one, which you could revert back to Administrators, you know, and so forth. So, I, I don't know, because that's that proposed budget. Um, is there a way that, you know, we can have those columns there, see them, and just debate what's there, not saying which one we're going to start working off of? I, I think that is kind of his concern.
I, I think you're absolutely right. Supervisor, or Director Samansky, you had a comment?
No, I just, um, just procedurally, we need to establish where we're, have, what we have as a starting point, so we decide where we need to have amendments and whether it needs to be a vote, right? Um, if we start with the Committee on Finance and Budget's Budget, we don't have to vote on their changes. If we start with the Administrator's Budget, then we would have to vote on their changes, there's a Board in the whole.
Well, might vote on changes, though if we agreed with the administrator, correct? The Administrator's Budget, we would then make an amendment to go back to the Administrator's Budget? That's where I'm-
Yes, yes. So that's the next step. So that's how you would, if, if, if a supervisor did not agree then with the Committee on Finance, they would have to propose an amendment to go back to the Administrator's Budget.
Perfect.
Does that make sense, the difference between the two?
Administrator Johnson, would you like to weigh in on this? We're trying to figure it out.
Well, to go to Supervisor DeLuca's point, I think it's hard to envision it, but there, there will be a progression of logical flow from left to right in totality as we go forward, right? So that's how we'll view that, so we know how that budget is being developed. So in each column, you might see something, right? Whether it's administrator's budget, you'll see that, but then if the finance and budget committee, along with finance director and myself, we decide, oh, we, I missed that, there's something we, we could have taken care of, the finance and budget committee, or it could be from another committee, we'll make that change, and that goes, flows from left to right. So the budget document continues to move forward in that progression, so it's not a column to column, it's, it's all working together in that direction from left to right. And you'll see those numbers that way.
So Supervisor Schmeyer.
Again, my concern is that what comes back to the Board from budget and finance is the administrator's budget, along with the recommended changes. The way that this is phrased makes it seem as if the Committee on Budget and Finance is sending back to the Board a changed administrator's budget. Here's what we're recommending.
Yes.
And let me finish, please. And so, it's the administrator who has the authority to draw up the budget and admit it. Budget and finance does not have the authority to make changes in that budget, but I certainly like the idea of laying it out clearly. Here's the budget, here are the changes. If we do it in a column format, I don't care how it's done, but I just want to be sure that what we get back from budget and finance is the administrator's budget, along with the wisdom of the finance and budget committee, and that, and that can be done in the way that was described by Supervisor Pagonis in the document. I just want to make sure that what comes back is not a changed administrator's budget.
Yes, it is.
That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Zuck.
Thank you. I think we kind of get caught up in language sometimes because we talk about the administrator's budget, and it's really not. It's the county's budget, it's the administrator's recommended of how we should run our budget. Using this format, we are simply saying we have the opportunity to see both numbers. So it's not that you're changing the administrator's suggestion at all, you're putting yours right next to it, and if we say this is the line we want to go forward with first, it's like Director Samansky said, any supervisor can always say, well, I would have rather had the back one, let's amend to go there. Otherwise, my first year on finance and budget, I think we had 22 amendments. Last year, we got off easy. So this would simplify it, and it really is everything on the same page. So nobody's taking one budget over another. So I would vote no to this amendment, and let's get this program going. Thank you.
Well, I think at this point, we should go to vote on the amendment, and everyone's clear on what the amendment is, I think. We've drilled it and drilled it. Oh, I don't know if she can, she would have to email it to you to have it show up on your pad, right?
That's my point. We can't vote on that pad.
So what you're seeing on the screen is being recorded along with our discussion, so this is, you know-
Right.
So the vote, I described it as the areas of amendment by Supervisor Schmeyer, do you see that part on your iPad?
No, my thing is-
Covered up by what?
No, I don't know what it is, but it's not working right.
You don't see that?
Can you see what's on the screen?
Yes.
There, you can read that?
I can read that, yes.
Okay, so-
Point is, this damn thing is, call the question, let's vote.
All right.
Okay, so everybody's ready to vote on-
Oh, hang on. No, it's, no, it's up on me.
Oh.
Yeah, something just happened.
Be patient.
I hope I don't have to kill it.
Yes, our machine, this is still working, so Supervisor Pagonis.
So, thank you. I was, I went to the WCA handbook, and in the handbook, in the budget calendar timeline, it specifically says, "The finance committee submits the amended budget proposal to the county board." So it's, the WCA, according to Supervisor Schmeyer, WCA has it wrong.
Or different.
Well.
Okay, Supervisor Schmeyer, do you want one last while we're figuring this out?
No.
Well, we have, we have-
We want to vote.
We can't get it-
I can, we can vote.
Can you get it up now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so this is, we're voting now on the amendment that we've just discussed. So if you agree with the amendment, you are going to vote yes.
Schneider, no, confirm?
No, confirmed. Leary, no, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, no.
No, confirmed. Tomsek?
Shit.
Yes?
No.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Who's going?
I was on the phone.
Tomsek, yes or no?
Um, yes.
Yes, confirmed. Good boy, no, confirmed. Anyone else who can't get their machine to work? Kirk, no. Kirk Dahl, no. Knight, no. Okay.
Shit.
We had five yes, 22 no, two absent, so the amendment does fail. So let's go on to the proposed, back to the proposed, I got to find it here. File 22 dash 20, 22, 25 dash 26 slash 047. This is the original ordinance now. And I think we will just go to a vote on the original ordinance. If you agree with the original ordinance, you will vote yes, the change to how we are going to do our budget.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Schneider, yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Yes, confirmed. Tomsek?
Yes.
Confirmed. Good boy, yes, confirmed. Who else? Anybody else? Knight, yes, confirmed. All right, we have 27 yes and two absent, so it does pass. Thank you all for a very good debate. Now, we are on 25 dash 26 slash 006. This has to do with our fund balance.
A resolution on financial policy, fund balance policy.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Leary, a second by Supervisor Wilke, explanation by Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you. This is, you've seen this several times. This version of the fund balance policy was an iterative process. It started with Supervisor Zuck with some sentences, which I then expanded to add more sentences, and then we sent it to Director Samansky, who put in even more sentences and all the hard parts, the definitions, and the explanations. So one of the pieces of this is that the Madam Treasurer would like a fund balance of $15 million. She says it's necessary for cash flow. She was pretty irate after the last time it failed, because she, she was quite clear with me, this is what we need for cash flow. So we went through, like, as I said, an iterative process, how do we back into it? How do we come up with it? And so it was Supervisor Zuck said, if we take the tax levy, and we take our sales tax, and we combine them, and then use that as our basis. And so that's pretty much what we've done. It's important to note that the fund balance policy is a policy to not remove money from the fund balance. It doesn't really have much information on how it gets there, it's just to avoid removing it. So Attorney McElwam said, well, if you're going to make a budget amendment, the money has to come from somewhere. Well, I remember years past where some department needed XYZ, and we took it out of the fund balance, and that, that became a habit. And so this is now trying to put the fund balance into a more controlled or secure situation to avoid having, having just, we need $600,000 in under for SNAP, and boom, taking it out of the fund balance. So that's what the point of it is, to avoid removing the money from the fund balance.
Thank you. Supervisor Zuck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I want to give you a quick summary of what I feel this fund balance policy is, the corrections are for, again, the key elements are basics. The objective or outcome really of a unassigned fund balance, not is the technical term, because it's money left over from our normal operations, but it's to provide some working capital for what we need at certain times. It also adds for a margin of stability in our operations. If we have some highs and lows, we've had a little bit of cash reserve there to keep it on an even basis. It improves credit, because the credit companies, all, banks, all like to know how your financial status is, and having a decent fund balance does prove that. So in the end, what we have there over our particular item has basic purposes. It's to maintain capital improvements, to manage debt, to pay for future capital, or what's referred to as pay as you go, and be there if we need it for these, the excess can be used for these purposes. The items we've done, the corrections we've made, were to not raise the dollar figures. If you look over the last five-year history, we have been everywhere from 13 million to 20 million, so the item right now being at 15.8 is not out of the question. It's easier to calculate with just using the revenue from levy and from local sales tax, so everybody can calculate themselves, you don't have to figure if somebody's done it correctly or not. And the way we've written it, we are attempting very drastically to reproduce or reduce opportunities for any misuse of that fund. So it defines it better when we do it this way, it reduces misuse, and it's logical numbers that fit our profile without us having to go out and look for more money. So I would encourage everybody to do this, it's a great opportunity to get this finally completed to a process where we can now understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Samansky, do you want to add any, any more detail to this?
No, I think Supervisor Zuck and Pagonis said a good job summarizing.
Great. Are there any, oh, Supervisor-
Schneider with a question?
Okay, Supervisor Russell, then Supervisor Schneider, then Supervisor Schmeyer. Supervisor Russell.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. A couple of questions. I was wondering how contingency fund fits into this? Is it part of the unassigned fund balance, or is that a separate account?
So I can answer that. For 2025, it has been, the contingency has been part of the fund balance, but for 2026, we're separating it, so the contingency is going to be separate.
Right, thank you. And then I just wanted a more, a little more explanation on setting aside funds for future capital projects. I think Supervisor Zuck alluded to that. Is this like a savings account for cap projects, or how does that exactly work?
We've spoken frequently about facilities having to, year after year, borrow for things that seemed to us as though it's, it's a maintenance thing, you know, and so I think, yes, it's, if we could have some type of a pool that, you know, we're collecting so that, for the purposes of having it available, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Schneider, oh, do you want to answer?
Real, real quickly, line two of the previous fund balance policy, over the last 10-odd years, says pay future capital or pay as you go capital. That's where it came from, it's always been there.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Schneider.
So in the situation of suddenly we got to pay for SNAP, where does, where would that come from next year?
Contingency.
And where would it come from this year?
Contingency. Oh, this year, we don't know, we haven't seen numbers, but for next year, if it, if that $600,000 is an accurate, even semi-accurate amount, it would probably be contingency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zuck.
The, the process now is that if a request like that in a department has to be addressed, they will go to the finance director, and he will determine if it can be done within their own department or not, and then refer to us at the finance and budget committee, and we will address it on where it can come from, not an automatic issue we hit it.
Thank you for that clarification. We're learning all this, it's new to us, so thank you for that. Let's see. Supervisor Schmeyer.
Did Schneider have a chance?
Oh, yep, she did. I thought so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, well, Supervisor Zuck answered half of my question.
Okay.
So in the, in the process that's being proposed for release of funds, the request goes to the finance director, and then from the finance director to budget and finance, correct? Is that what you said?
Correct. That's what he just said.
Yeah, okay. And then, so does budget and finance approve a budget transfer like that?
We're, we're supposed to be talking about the fund balance policy, so you're getting kind of off track a little.
Sorry, at some point, we're going to come to the use of the fund, though, correct?
What, the fund balance?
I don't know where it is.
Because this policy doesn't have anything to do with the contingency fund, that's a-
I'm not talking about contingent fund.
Oh.
I'm talking about requests for use of the-
The process, I think.
Of the, the process for tapping into the unrestricted fund.
Well, I mean-
That's contingency.
No, that's more, contingency is just a section of that.
Fund balance usage is a budget amendment that would require two-thirds of vote.
Right.
Of the Board.
Of this Board, yes.
Okay.
This is amendment to the budget.
Yes.
Okay, if that's what it is, then I withdraw my question. I was concerned that maybe budget and finance was approving some financial transaction that belongs to the Board, that was my concern.
No.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilke.
Maybe a question for the Chair of Finance. I'm assuming from this fund balance policy that it prevents me from, during budget deliberations, rating the fund balance for something I'd really like to fund. Is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay.
I see no other comments.
No, this is just a policy.
Policy, so this is the majority vote. So are we ready to go to vote? I think, I'm hearing-
Majority of those present.
Okay, so this is our 006 Resolution Concerning Financial Policy Fund Balance Policy. If you agree with the policy as it's been written, you will vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Tomsek?
Yes.
Yes, confirmed. Gabori? Yes, confirmed. Yes, confirmed. We have, yes, 27, two absent. Thank you. We are on our last resolution, 25-26/060.
It's a resolution authorizing a 2025 budget amendment for approval of 2025 grant awards, donations, and other revenue given to Eau Claire County.
I have a motion by Supervisor Myron, a second by Supervisor Chilson, an explanation by Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you. I think this is dumb that we have to do this. So basically, we've gotten a bunch of grants, and now we're supposed to vote to say, oh, sure, we really want it. And just so everyone knows, the new Title IV has given this authority to the Finance Director. It doesn't have to come here. Once the grant is awarded, that it's been, the Finance Director has the authority to put it in, put it into our budget. So these are all things that, actually typically, we hear about a department wanting to apply for the grant, and this is now, the grant has been received. So if there were some reason where you didn't think we should have that extra money, then you vote no. Otherwise, please approve this.
Thank you. Short and sweet, and I see that our point has been rescinded, our question, so are there any other questions, comments? Hope Supervisor Skinner. Question?
No.
Okay.
No.
It's that magic button, it's crazy on us.
No idea.
Okay, so we will move forward with the vote for the resolution authorizing a 2025 budget amendment for the approval of 2025 grants awarded. If you agree, vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Confirmed. Thompson?
Tomsek, yes.
Oh, my gosh, I am so sorry. I am, I have just mutilated your name several times tonight. I am just very sorry. Tomsek? Yes. And we have Gabori, yes. Knight, yes. All right. 27 yes, two absent. There are no appointments tonight. We have a announcement by Supervisor Skinner, and I'm sorry, we'll have to wait just a minute because I can't press the button. Here we go.
Thank you, and it's not really an announcement, but just to make you aware, I sent you all an email about Lake Eau Claire. Just to make you aware that Eau Claire County is getting one heck of a bargain out of all the volunteers at the lakes, and there was a pavilion there that they stripped down to its studs or steel beams because of mold, and with no roof, it sat there unused. And finally, one lake resident said, this is ridiculous, and went to the Amish, got the price quotes, because the county, we got the quote for $100,000 to put a roof on this thing. And the Amish, with the help of lake volunteers, came out last Saturday, and they did it for about $6,000. What a deal. So how do you save $100,000 for Eau Claire County in one day? Volunteers. And so it was in today's Eau Claire Leader Telegram on the second page, so you can read more about it. But that should all give us a good smile as we go into our budget session. So there you go.
Thank you for that. Great work. Any other announcements? We are adjourned.
And Supervisor Skinner, it wasn't announced, because that's what the agenda said.
What? I'm sorry.
It was not really an announcement. Yes, it was, because-